I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah.
I'm, I just wanted to be clear about when it is that I could address something that I'd saw in the newspaper.
Now would be the time.
Well, it's something in the paper.
I might have missed my opportunity.
Is it something on the agenda, on the agenda tonight, or?
Yes, I believe so. I am actually the owner of four oh three Prospect Street.
So we'll be have, that'll have its own.
That was, was that a headliner?
That'll, that'll have its, that'll have its own line here then.
What? Just give me a sign.
We will, when we get to that one, I'll make sure you get.
Lovely.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Um, item two is consent agenda. The following items have been deemed uncontroversial routine actions to be approved by the council on a single motion. If the council member of the audience, or member of the audience wishes to have an item removed from this list, when considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Um, I have minutes of April seventh, uh, twenty, uh, special meeting for April seventh, um, regular meeting. The B is the claims and fund list. C is reports for ice water, electric water for March. D is a police department activity report for March. E is the fire department report for March. Recommend approval if, for issuance of a beer and liquor licenses by the Iowa Department of Commerce for the following. Class C retail alcohol license, five day, Saint Thomas Aquinas Church at ten ten Des Moines Street. For event held on Saturday, May third. Renewal of a class C retail alcohol license for gridiron, family grill and sports lounge at eleven twenty one East Second Street. Auto renewal of a classy retail alcohol license for fairway stores at nine forty second, second, one forty two Second Street. Class C retail alcohol license, eight months for T T M M promotions, D B A Hamilton County Speedway at twelve hundred. Bluff Street, yes. Special class C alcohol license, five day Nicky's Tipsy's trailer. To servers at a wedding located at Hamilton County Fairgrounds, twelve hundred Bluff Street on June fourteenth. Special class C retail alcohol licenses all five day. Top of the Iowa Lucky Wife LLC to participate in special events in the Webster City Chamber of Commerce Market Nights. For the following dates, May twenty second, June third, June twelfth, nineteen, twenty six, July third, ten, seventeen, thirty one. August seven, fourteen, twenty one and twenty eight.
I moved to approve collectively. Or no, we need another two.
We got a couple. Sorry. Request for parade permit for American Legion, May twenty sixth, Memorial Day, seven hundred block alleys, Des Moines and Ohio Cemetery. Re, uh, H is request for a parade permit for Hamilton County Fair, July twenty second. The fair from July twenty two to twenty seven, Elm Street, Second Superior Bank, Easter Buke, Bluff and Fairgrounds. And that's it.
I move to approve A through each collectively.
Move or second.
All those in favor, Sally?
Aye.
Okay. Item three, general agenda. Um, a motion to approve proposed twenty twenty five, twenty six property tax levy.
Daddy. Good evening. So the, the overall levy will be, uh, what's being proposed is seventeen point two one four six three. And that is twenty one cents lower than the current levy. Um, and eighty nine, uh, I'm sorry. It's twenty one cents lower than the levy shown on the statement, eighty nine cents lower than the current levy. Um, it'll give us an additional sixty thousand dollars, which calculates to a one percent increase in dollars. Um, the, the evaluation, the, the statements that were sent were showing a ten percent increase in property values. The search that I did from property value from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four did not show increases. So since the taxes we're talking about is based on property values as of January, around twenty twenty four. I'm saying that a home assessed at a hundred thousand dollars would see a reduction of twenty two dollars for this levy that has, that we're proposing.
Is that anticipatory?
Based on, yes, based on, yeah.
Alright.
Alright. That's good enough. Call for motion.
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye. Um. Oh, yeah. Uh, uh, B is a public hearing to certify the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six budget. I'll open the hearing. Are there any written objections?
No.
Are there any oral objections? No. I'll close the hearing.
Having to do with what, sir? The general fund?
Beg your pardon?
Overall budget.
It's our overall budget.
Oh, the overall budget. And this includes the cell phones and such, or is that a separate matter?
It's, it's, it includes everything.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, okay, so corporate resolution approving the following notice and hearing of twenty twenty five, twenty six operating budget. And certified of city taxes for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth for the city of Webster City Isle. So, Dodi, over to you.
So Larry pretty much discussed the, the general fund. On the, a memo that was received by the, the council at our budget meeting is the same as this. That outlines the, the major funds. The, um, I just had the, the water fund, um, should not need to implement a rate increase. And when we do think that, um, possibly after June of twenty twenty six, and it would look to be minimal, we're looking at maybe a one percent. Based on, on the budget right now. The sewer, we do not plan to implement a rate increase until we get more concrete numbers on the new plant. And the electric, um, at this time does look to need an additional three percent in revenue. To offset the increase that we have received from corn milk. But we'll discuss that at a, at a later meeting.
Yeah. Call for motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item D is a public hearing for the construction of electric distribution improvements, phase one. I'll open the hearing. Are there any written objections?
No.
Are there any oral objections? I'll close the hearing.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
Did I receive a, did I get a signal about when I could speak about my?
No, chat. No chat.
Pardon me. I just.
You'll, it'll, it'll mention your, your address when we can.
Thank you.
Oh, man.
That might help, thanks.
Yeah. Well, we, we didn't, I resolve, I'm sorry, we go back to C. Resolution adopting a twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six capital improvement and capital equipment budget. And the twenty twenty five through twenty nine, what, thirty, capital improvement and capital equipment plan for Webster City Islands.
Who just wrote it?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry about that. So, D is pub, open the public hearing for the construction of electric distribution improvements. So we didn't have any written objections. Do we have any oral objections? I'll close the hearing. Um, Dodi, you want to talk on that one?
Um, I don't have a whole lot to say.
Adam, Adam.
Adam is not here tonight, but all I was telling you is the funding. The funding is part of that twenty twenty four electric bond proceeds. And we have allocated, uh, one point five million. At this point, it doesn't look like we're gonna need all of it for this project, but.
Yeah, it's considerably under.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, so resolution finally approving plan specifications, former contract estimate costs for authorizing the execution of a contract with West Union Trenching Incorporated. West Union Iowa for the electric distribution improvements, phase one.
I'm grateful.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item E is a resolution accepting and approving acquisition of property generally located at one twenty eight Apple Avenue in the city of Webster City, Hamilton County. Ariel, John.
Good evening, mayor and council members. So, um, this property was a property that we went to court and anticipated it as a six fifty seven. Um, A, which is Iowa code for an abandoned property. This property has been abandoned. Um, there was a large hole in the cross. We identified it during our, um, efforts in identifying dangerous and abandoned properties. So this one up on Apple did go to court, um, last week and court ordered, um, to the city of Webster City.
Okay. Call for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item F is a resolution accepting and approving acquisition of property generally located at four oh three Prospect Street in the city of Webster City, Hamilton County. This is your one who'd like to come up. Now, you've, you come up first and.
Oh, no, thank you. No pictures. I'm pleased.
To refresh them.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. And I also would love to exercise the Freedom of Information Act myself. Hi, my name is Leslie, and it might seem as though I'm somewhat of a performer. Um, I'll, I'll warn you right now that I'm awfully wordy. And I think it's necessary in a situation such as this. I'm really running the risk here of sounding like someone who is, uh, you know, um, perhaps uninformed. Perhaps I'm someone who has absolutely no concept of what modern day things are affecting our neighbors, our community members. Or perhaps I'm somebody that can enlighten you. My name is Leslie Anne Cornish, up until two thousand twenty, uh, two thousand twelve, and I've been divorced ever since two thousand fifteen. Why is that pertinent? Because in two thousand fifteen, I was awarded, uh, divorced by default. The judge that signed on this e-filing at our Hamilton County courthouse was Judge McGlynn. And I was more than satisfied with, uh, everything that he ruled upon that day. One of the rulings was a divorce by default. Uh, my ex-husband did not show, as he did not show today. Um, I have refused to come to any court hearings that addressed me as Leslie Anne Cornish Espinoza. I apologize, no disrespect to the city, uh, to my county, or to those who are in the courtroom on those days, like Mr. Chiswick. Um, uh, I just do not know myself to be Leslie Cornish Espinoza. Um, I have been Leslie Anne, A N N, as far as the middle name spelling. Um, which is confused with Webster County, who has an E in the middle. And as I explain these things, I think it's, it's, uh, it's okay to think of what I'm saying in the mindset of. Computers and how computers work systematically. As far as filing something with its correctiveness is, uh, what I'm trying to address in being so wordy. Uh, I apologize for being a little unprepared, but I hope that, I hope you guys understanding that a lot of this is just virtual files. And what can and cannot be done with virtual files.
What are we, what are we trying to get?
The divorce says that the house was mine.
Yeah.
I may or may not be able to provide proof at another time and location with discretion to my city government, my community. You know, that, uh, there is perhaps a person who has created a, a virtual neighborhood or a virtual world. That has a person-to-person open sharing network that may or may not have affected. My assessment of my property taxes. All of these things would be pertinent if you would. Be so kind as to hear me because what's going on is I'm losing my home. This is my home at four oh three Prospect Street, and I have been a community member here ever since I moved back in two thousand and six. Um, it's nothing to brag about. My home is popsicle stick home, but it's all I have. This community does not have section eight housing. This community does not have a fund for people like me. Whether it be my victimization or the homelessness that I'm facing because of how easy it is to just pass a paper through or an idea. From person to person.
You had your chance.
Because I have nowhere to go.
But you had your chance to go to court and you chose not to.
I, I had a chance to go to court as a different person. I tell you, when it comes to the condition of what legal matters are handled under. I would expect that never would I receive a paper quartered and thrown in my yard weathered after my detainment. I mean, it is by no means, uh, it's common sense law, as far as I'm concerned, to treat legal papers with the discretion that they, they deserve. Uh, when I, I understand that it sounds like I'm just somebody who's been in and out of jail. It was never my choice to be that kind of person. Uh, this is why I asked for, you know, I'm trying to handle this matter in the most. Discretion that I know how. At this point. I am going to be homeless because it was not recognized that that was my home. It was not clearly dictated who had any involvement in what. Because as far as I'm concerned, a lot of the, uh, citations that should have came from, I believe, is it Aubrey, Audrey?
Ariel.
Hey, pardon, I'm so bad with names. Ariel Bertrand and her nuisance departments and the nuisance officer. Um, there were, there were things that should have been delivered to Billy. Uh, Billy is my ex-husband because he did not, he was, uh, non-compliant with judges' orders since two thousand and fifteen. So I'm here pleading for my home. And I'm here saying, who handles things administratively so that I can get my rent back? That's been handed out on this marketplace for better part of years because I don't rent my home. I wanted my ex-husband to comply with judges' orders, which was the lack of respect, perhaps. That we as community members have for one another. I wasn't able to ensure my home.
So, so the, the problem I see though is you, you should have taken the time, you've taken the time to come here tonight.
I have taken the time to come here tonight.
You didn't take the time to go to the court when, when they were dealing with it because you chose to not accept the name that was on there.
Well, I would like to know where there's a certified receipt. Is there a certified receipt anywhere that I was somehow delivered to me and that I received it?
You seem to know all about it because you told us all.
Well, I would like to know if you guys do send these things in such a manner that they are handled with a legal dignity. Or are they quartered and thrown in my front yard?
Maybe, maybe we can talk about the process, you know, how we got here, you know, maybe, what is the process to?
I would love to know all of the details of the situation. Because four oh three Prospect Street should be the residence, uh, through the courthouse. In which was receiving three hundred dollars a month annuity that was never paid out to me. I, I believe that everybody there is pretty closely interacting with one another, the assessor with the treasurer, uh, the upstairs with the downstairs. And like I said, I did mention something about common sense law. I believe it's a practice.
I, I, I mean, maybe just more so for like the public and, and, you know, people hearing you out here and, and. Just educate everybody. We have some students here learning about government and, and, and the thing would be a good idea to kind of talk about the, the procedures we go through to get, get it on our desk. Right? Because it's kind of a lengthy process.
So I would love to know how it actually got into a situation where it needed my signature. Because that was the court order by Judge McGlynn in two thousand and fifteen. Is that the, that the property would be signed over in my name. Um, it's pretty common sense. I, I apologize. I, I mean, no pun. I just only know this term because that's how I. I mean, how would I know about it?
Exactly.
It was common sense. It was ordered in two thousand and fifteen that the house be put in my name.
Yeah.
And what name was that?
Yeah.
What name was that?
You know what? I believe that the final e-filing was, um, September eleventh, nine eleven, two thousand and fifteen.
No, what name did they address it to? Like when they put the name into your name?
The one that's on my social security card, it'd be Leslie Anne Espinoza. Anne, not to be confused with the initial D, and it does not have an E at the end of it. I'm saying those things specifically because of other things having to do with my victimization.
So, so Zach, Zach's our legal counsel, you know, city attorney, you know, he.
Yes, I haven't had the pleasure of meeting him within the city hall.
He's more intimate into like kind of.
He doesn't, he doesn't reside in city halls.
Right, right.
He's not a city employee, so, yeah. Um, I, you know, I don't, do what you, I don't, so you really see the sense in beating this thing up tonight like it's a court case?
Yeah, I would love to be able to, and I don't know if a person can even ask this kind of thing, but. I have on many occasions wondered when it would be, I mean, I, I don't think that I'm anyone special. But I am asking for a special circumstance to sit down with my city government and, uh.
Well, I think that we've actually.
End of that meeting, I would hope that everyone would say, now that we are crystal clear. And I think that that is a starting point.
Yeah. Do you want to take a seat for a minute and I'll have Ariel come up and explain to us where we're at with this? Okay.
So, um, speaking on.
Wouldn't, couldn't we start this thing quite a while ago with nuisances and?
We did. Um, so I don't know the exact date, or maybe, oops, grease, whatever, tell me. But we did start this process quite a while ago. Um, nuisance abatement with the city is nothing new. This is something that we've been addressing for as long as the, um, nuisance ordinance has been in place. We have become more proactive with it in the last couple of years with seeing the way that our community has, um, really. Received a lot of complaints along the dilapidated buildings, but also just trying to be more proactive rather than reactive. Um, so this particular property, um, certified letters were sent to Leslie. Um, we also sent certified letters to Billy, as she mentioned.
Could you define sent, uh, as far as, uh, any kind of receipt that you guys might have had on certified mail?
Yes, so certified mail, we require a signature when the letter is received. So, um, we have also attempted by regular mail. Um, and I believe with this last, um, acquisition, correct me if I'm wrong, but it would have been served to. Probably Billy, um, as well as Leslie.
And posted in the paper, everything, yep.
And posted in the paper. So it is a very lengthy process.
So when it is posted in the paper, it is then a for sure sign that maybe perhaps you didn't get a signature with the certificated mail?
It's just an additional stuff that we take.
It's always something that you guys take is publishing it in the newspaper.
Yeah, look at the, yeah, the legal notices are always in there, so.
So by the time we get to the point of actually having a court date, um, we've sent three certified letters. We have also sent regular mail, and by the time it's been in court, it's also been served by the sheriff's department. Um, so this property also went to court last week. Um.
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, I apologize. Um, two weeks ago. And at that time, the court order was that it be dated to the city. Um, we've done our due diligence and sending notifications. We've had meetings with, um, Leslie here in the city hall, just once. Once, um, but we explained to her what we were looking for to rectify this problem at this house.
So the, the court, I mean, the, the property records show that William Espinoza actually owned the house.
Junior, to be specific, him and his father.
He also appeared. And unfortunately, you're not, you're not William Espinoza.
He appeared at court, raised no objection either, so.
Yes, he appeared.
However, I do have the homeownership is, um, a non-compliance is something that I could have filed. Had I known, uh, anything else besides what was in the newspaper. Um, if I have a chance to attest, uh, the validity of the legal publications that are in the paper. I would love to bring to attention the August nineteenth, two thousand twenty four meeting that was published on September fourth of two thousand twenty four. Um, I read inside of that, that the property that was at one time a part of my property, mine is four oh three Prospect. And his, Michael Rockwell's property is four oh nine Prospect. I had read in the legal publication, in its validity, that, uh, that was sold. To the city of Webster City on August nineteenth, council minutes. I don't know if everybody perhaps remembers something so small. But five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars was paid to M Rockwell, and that was what was published in the paper as far as itemizations. There was also talk that day about a general fund loan that needed to be, uh, uh, distributed. And through the itemization, I had understood that as, uh, fault of the Webster City Police Department. Now that was a W C P D.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure where you're coming from.
Well, what I'm trying to say is that I wasn't sure whether four oh nine Prospect Street actually. Conjoined its property to four oh three Prospect Street for a value of five thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. Because anybody could drive past four oh nine Prospect Street and see that it probably would be in the best interest of our city to pay not more than two grand for it.
And that's irrelevant to having here tonight.
However, it's the validity of the, uh, published.
Well, we, we did, we purchased that property and that was the, that was the deal for us to get out. We're not having this.
Sir.
It's, uh.
It's in the ownership of Mr. Rockwell.
We've heard enough for this tonight.
Leslie, Leslie, I understand.
It's actually an hour.
Because I understand your frustration and, and.
I have nowhere else to go, Logan.
I, I know, I've.
No, this is absolutely un-American.
Let me, let me finish. Leslie, Leslie, I know you, Leslie.
I feel as if you're gonna hit it in the rug.
It's alright. I know your mom, I knew your dad.
My dad's dead.
I know he is.
My dad was dead.
I want you to calm down this.
And I haven't received a dime.
I want you to listen.
From this government.
Leslie, I'm, I'm here, I want to listen to.
There's no reason why my property taxes shouldn't have been paid, Logan.
We, we gave it a value to that property to avoid the legal cost. Going, sending Zach to court for us costs money. So, you know, having, having this emotion tied to it has its toll as well as you, you can feel.
Detach the emotion. That'll be fine.
What I'm trying to get at, Leslie, is we have a process to keep our building safe and our, our community safe and clean. And unfortunately, you've reached the end of that process.
Victim of the unclean, of the uncleanliness, the victim of the uncleanliness is also the one that's gonna have to anticipate a life of more unclean. In a community in which her father, her mother, her brother, my children. Have contributed to invaluable. And we are detached in the emotion here. All of us, perhaps the majority of us have children. And this is the only thing that I would have ever had to hand down to them. Not only was I not able to take care of it because my law enforcement, they failed me. They absolutely failed me for years, and I am one woman. If there is anything that I do, then it will be to get the respect. That I deserve, which is the same as any red-blooded American. I am absolutely homeless. Logan, there is no.
The respect is given because as you see.
Has not been given.
There was a person that just lost his home, the agenda before you, the, the item you, you, you just stated.
That person is not me.
I know, Leslie, but it's, we're treating everybody the same, Leslie. Don't you think we're, we're.
No, you're not treating me the same because that property has been hassled upon me whenever it came to a cost or a citation. When it was something like that, Billy was never bothered about it. He had been to court. There was court documentation about where his permanent address was, where he was getting mail. And I currently am here at this hearing tonight, but yet I've been shoved out of my own home. Of the things that were going on in my neighborhood to raise the assessor's marketplace valuation. As in accordance, a year later. You know, I mean, my property taxes went up three times higher in a neighborhood where the headliner was Vera Blue Farms's hundred million dollar debt.
Leslie, we, we respect you, we're treating you like everybody else, and there's resources in this community to help you.
There are no resources for me. And if there are, I don't have a darn person to get me there. I don't have a darn cooperative person, not a single one. So to bring up my mother and my father.
No, I want you, Leslie, I just want you to go.
I understand, but I'm detecting my emotion. This is un-American.
Okay. Well, wait, Logan, we're done with this.
I, I know, I'm, I'm just trying.
Okay. Leslie.
I can't imagine, I apologize for any feelings that I might be putting upon anyone. And no, it's not too late.
Well, it is.
My jurisdiction will differentiate.
Well, we'll finish with this discussion.
That's fine, you can be finished.
Yeah, okay, so call for motion.
Still moved.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um, item G is a resolution authorizing the city of Webster City, Iowa to enter into a first amendment to fiber optic network installation agreement and right-of-way access license and platform connect. Ariel, was you on this one or? No, this is, no one's on this one, I guess it's just uh that's a fiber and platinum connect agreement, I mean, it's all been looked at by the attorneys and did you wanna, I've got a question on that, Bob?
Well, I don't know what it's about, I was asking Zach before the meeting began, I've read it several times. It appears to me to have just been a review by an attorney and.
There's the amendment, I think, based on the original agreement, there was fees related to um if they were doing work, permit fees. And 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 because that was satisfied in the original agreement, basically, this just states there wouldn't be any additional permit fees if there's additional work to be done. Um the franchise fee was essentially.
They they don't have to pay fee on their lines that they have in, but if they're working in the right of way, they still have fees to pay.
I see, okay.
So the the lines that they already have in, they don't have to pay fees for.
And they had shown that the lines were built out as.
Correct, it wasn't ninety percent in the original agreement or something like that.
All right.
Yeah, I think it was page eighty-nine that has the the actual amendment. So I think number one was the big one, in my opinion.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item H is a resolution approving the preliminary plat- plat for Lynx Development Number Two located at Webster City, Iowa. Ariel.
Again, um so this is a consideration of a preliminary plan amended residential development um for Lynx Development Two, so this did come to council in two thousand and eighteen. At that time, the city council approved a preliminary plat and PRD for the site um that was allowing for a mi- a mix of duplexes and single-family homes across thirty-four lots. Um the developer has come back and has requested that that be um amended for the purpose of it being six, they want to split the lots from thirty-four to sixty-one lots. Um because of this, um fifty-six of the lots do not meet the standard or the regulation for the lot size of six thousand square feet. Um I do wanna mention that this is not changing the amount of units that was approved back in two thousand and eighteen, so that it's still the same amount of units, um it's just splitting the lots. Um our comp plan and our housing study states that we need two hundred and thirty-five new units by two thousand and thirty, um we recently had a countywide study done which um stated that we need fifteen hundred new units countywide, majority of those being in Webster City. Um the reason this is coming back again is because we are asking for the um lot size to be decreased. Um this area on Edgewood was identified also on our future use plan and or on our future use land map and our comp plan as one of two areas that would allow for medium to high-density residential development. Um the other being on Wall Street, which that would be the Kaden development that has come before you in the past, um this does meet um the standard, so for um medium to high-density residential areas, um it would be five to twelve dwelling units per acre. With this new revised plat, um it would be nine point one five dwelling units per acre, which falls within that. Um again, this is a area that is zoned as a mix of R-two and R-three, which are single-family, two-family for R-two, and then R-three is multiple, multiple-family residential. Um this did go to planning and zoning on um April fourteenth, it's been reviewed by city staff, RDG Planning, and Snyder and Associates, and we did not see anything other than some minor housekeeping of some um burbage on the documents that needed updated. Planning and zoning did not approve the recommendation for this, um they, the reason that they cannot was because they had some questions that were not answered. Um we do have some representatives from the development team on the Zoom meeting tonight, so if there's any questions after I go through what um why planning and zoning did not recommend this, they're here to answer those as well. Um but the reason that they did not uh recommend approval was because they didn't have detail on the anticipated sales prices of these homes. The clarification on garage stalls counts in over all parking, and then limited information on the home layouts within the revised lot, so they wanted to see what a house would look like on a lot. Um and then the last question they had was whether multiple lots could be combined for a larger single-family home. With this revised plat, um like I stated, it's sixty-one lots total, forty-five of those would be single-family lots and sixteen duplex lots, so eight buildings with two units each. So the reason that the request of the amended PRD is again for that minimum lot size requirement.
Did they answer any of the questions since?
They did not, um they're here tonight, I believe it's Larry and David on Zoom.
I don't know how Zoom works, so I don't, it's nothing's up.
No, okay.
Zoom's not working?
But I, they don't give me, I don't have a login for it or anything.
So Brian.
I guess I would like to hear, do they have answers to some of those questions, you know, my uh my um, I guess, the way I would lean is to send it out to be, to get those questions answered. So purpose why we have it in place, um seeing some of the lot sizes being forty-four by ninety, you know, what kind of home are you gonna put on that? I understand the economy scale and the more that they get the homes on, the better, and I'm not opposed, and I just, I think it's important to planning and zoning have some of the questions answered, that's my prerogative, I guess.
That was gonna be my suggestion, is that it needs to be deferred back until those ha- questions have been answered, but they have.
And I think we could do that if they can provide answers. Send it to planning and zoning, may.
Yeah, absolutely, we can.
Uh this is David Bent here, can you hear me? Hello?
Hello?
How many, you said fifty, like fifty-six of the sixty-one would be under the minimum size?
Are the ones on Kading's properties, are they small, like these new ones they're proposing? It's more because they're together, isn't it? Because they're duplexes, yeah, but they're singles, okay, yeah.
And so these would all be owner-occupied, whereas Kading's would be.
Ariel, this is David Bent, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Dave.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Well, let's see what happens.
Hello?
Hello?
They don't seem to hear you, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, whoever you is, I'm not sure.
That's Larry, it's Larry you're hearing, I I can hear you, they.
And David.
What's that?
David was trying, David was trying to talk and you can't hear David. Anyone on one?
No, because it turns me off, and it turns this off.
So you're off now?
Yeah, now it's gonna hear it.
So it was in the speakers, but.
Can you, can you hear me now?
That's muted.
That's muted.
Can you hear us now?
I still can't hear, we can hear them.
Can you hear us?
Not be plugged into the computer.
The passive mic was picking up. Yeah, and. Well, the public watching on Facebook, so we will hear us.
Are you hearing Larry Hyler now?
Well, Larry, I can hear you, and you can hear me. Hello?
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 This is David Bent, can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
Okay, this is David Bent with Busch Engineering, thirty-five oh one, one hundred and fourth street in Urbandale. I'm sorry, I'm up at Minnesota in a hotel, um couldn't make it tonight. Don't know if I have answers to all the questions, but the main point is they were duplex units, and there's a to my understanding, there's a better market for individual units, so the houses would be similar in size for square footage, but they'd just be on their own lot. And I assume they'd have similar garage-type structures as if they were duplexes. So all we're doing is eliminating the common wall in the houses and creating two individual lots.
Will there be basements?
Well, I suppose it depends on who the home builder is, but I think it was designed to have basements, the sewer's deep enough to have basements, but if somebody buys a lot, they can build a house with a basement or not a basement, unless the city wants to put a code, you know, requirement on there that they have to have basements.
So the idea is to sell a lot.
Correct, to sell the lots to individual home builders.
Do we have a list of questions on this?
Is it single?
I think there was three or four units, three or four lots we couldn't split up, it would still be duplexes. And then the ones we could split up were the lots were big enough, they would be single-family houses.
Does that mean one level?
Whatever the home builder wants to do, whatever your code allows, if they want two-story, they could do two-story. I would assume it'd be two-story, because usually the smaller lots are two-story houses. I, I just don't think he has a specific buyer. I think he just thinks the market's better for individual houses versus duplexes.
So I assume you're aware that lot size doesn't meet the minimum fifty-six of the sixty-one lots. Or some of them are forty-two to forty-five and width, which is pretty narrow, so I I don't know if there was a reasoning behind I guess, expanding it to sixty-one lots versus maybe maybe sixty feet wide. I know, I I live in, not a new-build area, in a section of town, sixty-foot wide lot, and I think it's pretty narrow. I'm just curious, you know, the concern would be, um there were questions the planning and zoning had that hadn't been answered, and is there, is there a rush on this, that we couldn't refer this back to get those questioning, questions answered and take this to the maybe?
I know the developer was hoping to get it done sooner rather than later. Um I can tell you here in the Des Moines market, I'm doing a development in Granger right now, just kinda northwest of Des Moines. And we're doing some in Urbandale, they have these smaller lots, um it's kinda the way the market's moving with the price of construction and the price of houses, to get uh to get uh people a nice house, entry-level house. Price point, I should say.
And you're seeing lots as narrow as forty to forty-five feet in width?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a pretty common thing in the big city.
Yeah, well, I'm, yeah, in the big city.
Lots in the center of town that are.
I did a development in Clive, Iowa, back before the oh-eight recession. We had thirty-foot wide lots, they were two-story houses, so back then, selling for two hundred and fifty thousand. They were pretty nice units, two-car garage underneath. Um they were, they were nice, they're in the com- Boston Commons Par- um Boston Commons Park, I think it was called.
I guess the decision's whether we want it.
I think I still ought to have it go back.
Yeah, me too, I thi- I think maybe some of these questions should be vetted out with P and Z. Um they should hear this stuff, you know, and 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 then come back with an updated recommendation. I really appreciate you guys jumping on the cold and answering some questions, but maybe work with our P and Z a little further, and then they'll come back and uh all the information, and uh hopefully by the next council meeting, we'll have a decision for you.
Did you guys receive the list of questions or um, maybe concerns isn't the right word, but um questions that they had, do you have those?
Um Ariel did tell me those questions, but Dean talked to someone over there, and I thought Dean was gonna get him some samples of house plans, I didn't know where that stood, I guess, Dean is the developer, I'm I'm the civil engineer. So I don't know where that stands, Ariel, maybe you know if Dean had some more information he provided or not.
I have not received those.
Okay.
Okay.
So let's.
I don't have questions.
Thanks, fellas, for calling in, or being on the Zoom, which not working real well on our side. Um, I wanna wanna make a motion to.
Motion to defer it back to planning and zoning.
I would second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Um so that means that J really is irrelevant, so we'll go.
Yeah, we'll have to just defer that back to planning and zoning.
Aye, yeah, sorry, aye, J is fine, yep. J is a resolution setting time and place for a public hearing and a proposed proposal to amend the Code of Ordinances of City Webster City, Iowa twenty nineteen pertaining to chapter ten, article four, entitled Vacant and Abandoned Property for May fifth at six oh five P M.
Um so this item has gone for the planning and zoning commission, and they initially recommended adopting a new vacant building ordinance. Um that did successfully pass through city council first and second readings. Um but during our proactive efforts of identifying the vacant and abandoned buildings in Webster City, we have realized that there's more properties than we really knew, um so we have addressed this in another manner of adding it um as a neglected vacant and abandoned property, so right now I'm just requesting to set a public hearing um to, uh for May fifth at six oh five through the um public hearing and first reading.
Move to approve.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ariel.
Thank you.
Um K is a resolution authorizing this city of Webster City, Iowa to enter into a marketing agreement with Utility Service Partners Private Label Incorporated uh for service line warranties of America. Um so John Geiser was gonna call in, I believe, but I don't think we can get it uh or Ashley was, I'm not sure if some- somebody was gonna be on, but. Yep, John Geiser not here, oh, he is, he is here. Did you wanna talk on something on?
Yeah. Does he have any questions for me regarding?
Mike, you're the, you're the next one, Mike.
Talking about uh having the city money from people
Can, can you come down to the podium here and, thank you?
Anytime the city has that service down, the people are going to expect more than what you're going to be able to give them. That there's a service contract and I'm old, as you get older, you see that the city, oh, cities think we need this. No, the city doesn't think we need it. That's just a possibility. People see that, that the city's talking about using it. They'll think, well, we better pay for this. And I don't feel it's usable for somebody, the city to have that on their bills. It's just a matter of the city's up here and we're going to think about the city. They're going to worry about it and they're going to think the city's going to take more care of it than they would.
But it's not on our utility bills, is it, Doug? Isn't this a separate agreement?
Believe Bill, how I heard, the marketing, the city logo has to be on, on some, some part of the, of the first line.
It's on their marketing, yeah.
It, it sounds like the city's marketing. As you get older, um, maybe we worry endlessly about it because we think something's going to happen to our house. But now in the past, we've got letters saying, oh, you can guarantee your gas lines. We've just got those the other day. They won't get a guarantee your gas lines. I mean, how many people have bad gas lines? But you see that with the city's name on it, they'll say, well, we better sign up for this. And there's a fee and I don't think it's reasonable for the city to put their name on something like that or be able to even collect it through the city. Just from my plumber.
Okay.
Long time plumber. A long time plumber. You're going to have a little leak in the bathroom. It wraps the floor, goes through the ceiling. They're going to come back, well, you fixed the stool, but he fixed the ceiling, you know? And the city cannot open that up to them. But I don't think it should have anything to do with something. It's not very clear, but.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, ta- talking to some insurance providers too, since this came to be, you know, this is an insurance that you can get through a lot of other people. You know, and it's, it's a readily available insurance. Uh, I actually signed up for a couple of properties I only own, but so, so it, I totally get it. I, I worry about finding orangeburg all the time or orange, oh, man, that would just ruin investment properties and stuff, so. Um, I totally get it. I totally understand, you know, having Webster City's logo on it. People may assume it's kind of like, hey, you should do that. Uh, but again, this is an opt-in thing, you know, totally opt-in. I, I don't believe we collect the money, right? Like we, yeah, no, we, we don't have anything to do with the financial side of it. It's just we're allowing them to use our logo and be in our neck of the woods, right? Okay. No, I, I understand. I understand.
John, what's your address? What's your address? Okay, thank you. Okay.
I've been forty-nine years licensed. I've been most of the houses. And you could say it's not needed.
Well, like you say, Black Hills Energy is doing the same thing, but, uh, so we have exactly the same thing with them going around town, so.
One time they were not allowed to do that. Number of years, well, Black Hills, they were not allowed to do that.
Yeah, I don't know, but, um, I mean, this is something that lots of towns have already. We're not first by a long, by a long means, but and I mean, and of course it was pointed out to us, one insurance, one of the insurance companies told us that that you can get it on your house, on your, you can put it on your own house insurance for half, half the money that these people are.
But thanks for coming down though.
Thank you.
As it was pointed out to me today that there was concerns about, um, um, you know, the giving out phone numbers and things like that from the city. I'm not sure how we go with that, Dodi, but, but.
I did call Ashley a few minutes ago and she just said that the city has the option. Um, we can either provide a list of the residents and the addresses that we have. And she said it goes fifty-fifty on cities that want to do that. If we say no, they just, they purchase that from a company.
Well, I, you know, I would think the address is fine because you can look that up on the S S S webpage, so it's.
Yeah.
But I, but I think if you've got phone numbers and maybe we couldn't supply the phone numbers.
Name and mailing address.
Yeah, I would be more comfortable with that address. They can ignore the mailing. But if you're getting a call and you don't want it, that's.
I get enough, I get enough fake calls already during the day, so having ten less of those would be nice. I guess, um, anyway, just decide which way you want to.
Oh, I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah, I, I think it's a, a, just another service that can be offered. People want to go about private insurance, you know, going that route, they can. It's just another option that people have to protect their water and sewer lines, so.
What's the cost of it these days? I mean, it's, there are people thinking about it, that's for sure, but.
Yeah, I'm afraid my sewer line, that wouldn't cover about half of it, so.
But I moved approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The item L is a motion approving development agreement for four oh eight Grove Street. So Mike, you're up this time if you want to. You two, you two can come together if you like. He won't, Mike, I don't, I don't think Mike's going to bite you, so you're a little, you know, Mike feel a little safer this time.
But we're not, so, uh, yeah, I just, uh, would like to offer up any answers that you have on my plans for the property or, you know, a little discussion back and forth. That would be fine. So, um, like I said, whatever you guys would like to know about my intentions would be, I'd be willing to know some this time.
Um, I guess you're going to look at having the two properties put as one, ain't you? What are they?
I want to go see what steps, what does he take for the two properties and the one for any, any, you know, legal purposes, basically.
Yeah, once that, once the house is down, then Mr. Scott will receive a deed for it and on that deed, there will be a deed restriction that tells the auditor to combine.
And of course I looked over the agreement that we signed. Um, everything, I'm agreeable to everything, but I may need a little additional time with the cost of, of concrete and more paving than additional driveway. I wasn't factoring that in when I initially did that, kind of came as a surprise, so I don't. I was just wondering if I can gear everything up to that. And then maybe ask some slack on how long it takes me to do that part. I'm not against doing it. I just don't know if I can swing it that quick, so, um. But if you guys have any other questions on what my plans are, I've, I've been talking to the entities that I need to, to do the physical disconnects from the utilities and I, I've got a call into the contractors to set up a more, um, more firm estimate of what I did initially talk to one, but I wanted to get, you know, now we can talk brass tacks on that. So depending on what the, what the cost is going to be relative here approximately, I know it's going to vary somewhat with the, um, depending on how much weight we have in taking to the landfill and whatnot, so.
Yeah.
But we had an approximate agreement, so I kind of know the ballpark of what we're, so it won't come as too big a sticker shock.
Yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I just, um, the main thing, main sticking point for me would be if, as long as I can get a little bit of leeway on, on the
The concrete.
The concrete work, that would be my biggest issue, um, just coming up with funds for something like that at this time.
Did you, um, did you want, said that way in the, or are you happy to, to give him the time?
Can we?
Yeah.
Right. But, um, yeah, I'm, I'm, uh, working on getting the house down, so.
He wouldn't have to.
Getting out the garage and everything like that. So we'll get that done just as soon as I can get a contractor in there.
We don't get this deadline, then we'll just have to bring it in turn extension.
Okay.
Okay.
And I'm more willing to do that to come down.
I think that's set for June of July, right?
July, yeah.
What kind of type of timeframe are you?
Um, I, it's going to depend on the contractor. Um, I can't imagine it would take very long once they're able.
I guess I mean the cost of, you know, adding the concrete or asphalt.
Uh, I haven't, any team had a chance really to, um, I, I got that great, part of the agreement, what was it, Thursday or Friday? And I really haven't had a chance to even talk to anybody about doing that yet as far as costs go. So, um, I figured with all the other stuff, that's going to pretty well uh, take things down and as far as what my resources for the time being, but then you know, I can address that at a later time. That would be, that would be fine with me.
Mike, I only have one question.
Yeah.
You've waited a long time for this.
Yes, I have.
Are you still going to come to council meetings?
Well, I, uh, actually I found it a lot interesting. You know, I started out coming down hoping to hear something and as time went on, you know, you kind of get invested in some of the things going on, so I probably will show up to, maybe not every council meeting, but.
Always welcome.
Yeah, yeah, but just keep my, uh, ear to the ground on what's going on in the city, so.
Yeah, I, I don't have any other questions and I won't make you wait any longer. I, I moved to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Mike.
Hi, good to see you.
Item M is a resolution authorizing execution of a line of credit corporate, corporate guarantee agreement between the City of Webster City and the Webster City Daycare Center and First State Bank. John, you're right on time.
Thank you. Mayor and City Council, um, Zach prepared a line of credit, um, that, uh, essentially puts the city in first position to stand behind the Webster City Daycare, uh, should they choose, um, to enter into a loan agreement with First State Bank. Um, the purpose of this agenda statement is at this point in time, uh, Webster City Daycare uh, is considering some, uh, facility improvements. They currently have a geothermal unit that is down. Uh, they also have, um, uh, some repairs to, uh, other areas of the building uh, and are in need of funds. Instead of requesting that the city fund those with city, uh, dollars, uh, the proposal right now is to, um, work with the daycare to review their finances and determine if they can get into a, a position to assume, uh, some type of note to resolve matters, uh, at the building that are required for day-to-day operation. Uh, I can answer any other questions about, um, my dealings with the daycare. Uh, I've recently been appointed to their board and I'm working with them on their finances.
I think the, I, I, uh, recognize the importance of, of having daycare within the community, so I guess first and foremost, um, wanting to make sure that we can do what we can to keep, uh, the facility viable. Um, what I would like to see if we're going to go down this route is there be some sort of language that um, we'd have the opportunity to review or, or maybe John on the board would review and provide recommendations on, um, X amount of money is going to be borrowed. Um, there's a path to repayment, so the city isn't on the hook for, you know, having to pay it back if there's a default. There's got to be a, a path to be able to repay that hundred thousand dollars um, shown by the review of the books. Like I said, I'm, I'm supportive of the idea of being a guarantor with some stipulations and protections. That's my perspective.
I'd agree with that. It's, you know, if we're going to be paying any major lump, big lump sums out of it and probably come back to us and give a sigh on it.
So what I, what I'm hearing is that before any, um, proceeds from a line of credit that would be backed by the city would be utilized before that would even be, uh, utilized. Uh, I or a representative from the daycare would come back and present a financial plan to the city either at a council meeting or in communication with the council that this is, um, uh, the, a plan for repayment is secure.
Yeah, that or, you know, we just, we have a, a stipulation there that we just expect an update every quarter or something of how they're doing, you know? Because like, I'm guessing by design, this is really to help them, you know, in the interim, you know, not long-term, you know, so.
Yeah.
So we just want to kind of just keep finger on the pulse of how they're doing. At least I do, I speak for myself, um, you know, how they're doing and, and maybe a, a, a financial breakdown or an update. Um, more, more so on the financial side would be, uh, warranted once a quarter or something from them.
Well, I would assume this is a pretty short term.
Yeah.
We'd be looking for a imminent solution for them.
Of course.
All right. Go for motion.
So do we, is there wording changes we need to put in there or do?
Yeah, I, I would appreciate, oh.
No, good.
I'd, I'd just appreciate as part of the motion, a condition that before the line of credit is accessed, that the council have the opportunity to approve that, um, plan or draw.
So we're, so we're, you're saying we, we would have a ability to say they could or could not use it in that manner?
If we're going to be the guarantor, so let's take, let's take an example of they want to take out a hundred thousand dollars for building improvements and it's a hundred thousand dollar playground. That's not going to improve the building. And I'm not saying they would do that, but, but that would be something you'd present. We want to do the roof. We want to do the geothermal. We want to do this. Or maybe we're expanding and remodeling the classroom space so we can accommodate thirty more kids. There, there needs to be something if the city's on the hook for that, there needs to be some sort of a, okay, let's present what is going to be spent so that we can have a, and, and that there's a repayment path that we can be um, assured that they're going to be able to make those payments based on their.
I'm, I'm with you. I didn't think of it like that, but yeah, that's, I, I like that.
That was an extreme example, obviously, but.
I just want to assure the public, uh, that this proposal does not obligate any city funds in the immediate, only in the case of a default. And secondly, there is no, um, matters currently present at the daycare that suggests that it would be closing or anything of that nature. Uh, they simply have some capital improvements and other, um, work that needs to be done to, um, to ensure that the environment is, um, one that we would expect for the children of Webster City.
It's like we're cosigning a loan for them.
Fairly similar, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I would move through approve with the stipulation that the, any borrowing plan comes back to council or review and approval prior to.
I second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Go for motion to adjourn.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, June. Thanks, everybody.